Let's call this April 30th meeting to order. George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozen?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Naso?
Here.
Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dimeo to take role for City Council.
Okay, and just how we do our present on our side is a council as a whole with school board members. It's April 30th, 2018. It's right around 7 o'clock. And with that, I will just do role call. Mr. Damit?
Here.
Siruff?
Here.
Ms. Kosick?
Here.
Short?
Here.
Dimeo, myself, here. Mr. Carbone?
Here.
Mr. Schoenhut?
Here.
Mayor Persiak?
Here.
And Law Director Neil Jamison?
I am here.
Okay, and before we turn it back over to you Carl, if you don't mind, just for a quick minute. I know this is an historic meeting. This has not happened since I have been part of the city of Strongsville. So, just a little history of this council wanted to reach out, as we did last November, to Jane, our representative, and of course you Carl, the council president, or the school board president at the time. And we wanted to start a new track for the two entities in Strongsville, with of course the permission of the mayor, and I'm sure your superintendent and his staff as well. You know, so many new things are happening. We're gonna have a new governor. And this is one of the most important things we do in the future. And what I mean by that is simply, without getting into the whole last eight years or so of the administration down in Columbus, certainly we know that the funds have not what it used to be and what we were accustomed to for many years. So hopefully, moving forward from today, which again, I think is very historic, all of our members are here, the mayor's here, our law directors here, all your members are here, and as well as your administration. We know there's gonna be some tremendous changes in Columbus. You and I talked about some things earlier in the weeks past, as well as Jane Ludwig. She's been to all our meetings. So with that said, I don't know how you wanna handle it from here, but when I say, if I said myself, I certainly met our team here in the Strongsville city side. And we really appreciate the beautiful surrounding you let us start the first meeting.
Excellent. Well, we're here and we're excited. Welcome, Mayor, President Dimeo, City Council. We're excited to have you guys here. You know, we all says that we're excited to have this group here because we all share the same goal, a better Strongsville. And some people look at it as we take care of the kids and you guys take care of the city. But we, but we know that that can't happen. We need, without the way you guys handle the city, the way you provide the services on snow days, on keeping the streets maintained, and you provide protection. You know, we can't take care of the children unless you guys take care of the town, right? So it's a joint goal. And then likewise, without a strong school system, right, nobody wants to come here. You know, all of a sudden, property values would drop, vacancies, it wouldn't be the Ville that we're so proud of, right? So we know that we have to work as a group and keep this together and keep the dialogue going and make sure that we, that we keep moving towards our objective, which is the same goal. We all have the same goal, make it a better Strongsville, right? At every one of our meetings, we have three stated goals, and we make a point to state those goals at every meeting. So we've got student achievement, financial prudence, and community engagement. And we can't achieve any of those goals without the help from the city. You know, we all have to work together. So we appreciate you guys being here. We appreciate an extra meeting for everybody, and we'll try to keep this short, the speech is short. But what we wanna do is take you through our finances, show you where we're at, show you our 30-year plan, and then talk about where we can work together to do better. So from there, I mean, that's really all I have to say, but thank you very much. I know it's unusual, we're excited about it, hopefully it becomes trend at some point. We start doing this, you know, at least once a year, get together and talk more. Nice to meet everybody. So with that, we've got some items. Next, we should stand for the pledge, which is very important.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So then we can just work through the, through the agenda. We can, the first, the first item on the agenda is our safety program. And I wanna thank the mayor, and the chief, and city council, and everybody for helping us with that plan because it's so important. But you reached out to us directly, Mayor, and we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With that, Cameron, you wanna take them through the changes that we've, you know, that we're gonna implement over the...
Sure. So obviously, school safety has been a priority for us at every day. As I said when we had our community conversations, it's, it's my utmost responsibility to ensure all the families and kids and staff that we have here each day are safe. And that's paramount to our job, and we've taken that seriously even before the increase in school shootings that we've seen. We've had that relationship with the mayor and the city and the Strongsville Police Department, whether it be Chief Goss, or Chief Kovak, and now Chief Fender. But we have reevaluated our plan in totality to look at where we can continue to enhance. Obviously, as Carl said, thank you to the city and the mayor and the chief for providing us a full-time SRO here in the middle school. That's been a great addition to our...
If I can interrupt for one second. And we know that we're gonna go through the finances shortly and see what a challenge it is. And we appreciate City Council voting to provide that officer for us. So we appreciate that, and we know it was, you have to give up something else to do that, right? So thank you.
And so one of the things we took a look at is, in terms of police coverage, what is our responsibility for the safety and security of our buildings? As the city has so graciously provided the high school and middle school SRO. So we had a press release that went out on Friday, and effective today, we have additional security officers, off-duty Strongsville Police Department officers that are in our elementary buildings and preschool on a daily basis. And so that's something that Chief Fender and I have worked out. And it's great to see, it's fully uniformed officers that are in our district on a daily basis. They've been there as a part of their beat rotation. They've been responsible to be in our buildings on a daily basis. But we do have officers that are now specifically being compensated by the district as off-duty security to provide additional security services for our district. And we're thrilled to have, add that layer of security to what we do on a daily basis. Some of the other things that we've been working on is, you know, we have to look at our protocols for how students and families and visitors enter and exit our buildings. And making sure that those exits and entrances are secure, and the protocols that we use to screen visitors as they come in are significant. So we already have, and we've had for some years, based on Chief Fender's recommendation, a system called Raptor that screens and has an electronic database of all of our visitors to the district. We do have a handful of our buildings that have secure vestibules in place. What that means in terms of a school is you enter the main door, kinda like you did at the middle school this evening. During school hours, you would not be able to get out of that vestibule without first getting buzzed into the main office. So you would get into the main office, be screened, and only at that time would you be allowed access to the rest of the building. As I think some of the articles in The Post have shared, that we are able this summer to secure the vestibules in all of our buildings. So all of our buildings by the start of the next school year will have secure entrances where nobody will have access to the general hallways or population of our building without first going into the main office, which is a great upgrade to what we're able to do and to make sure that our buildings are secure and nobody has access to our buildings until they've been properly screened. The last, the last thing that I'll mention that we're working on is obviously, through the police department, there's comprehensive training for all of our staff. We have, for a new staff, they go through a full training, which is two to three hour training. It's based on the Homeland Security, Alice kinda Homeland Security system that the police has adopted and so have we at school. And then every year, we do a refresher training for our staff. So everybody goes through that. But what we're offering in this spring is for our current staff, anybody that wants to go through a full training, will have that opportunity to do so. And to make sure everybody's clear on the protocols that we use in the, in the event of a, of a true threat. I said the last thing, but now the last thing that I'll mention before there's any questions that you may have for, for us, is that I also think it's important for that personal contact. So through March and April, I went around to every building and every department in the district, personally met with staff that wanted to talk about security concerns, security suggestions. We compiled all that feedback, and now we have a team that are developing security checklists for each building that on a monthly basis, based on the criteria that we've set, the feedback that we've gotten from the building levels, that will be audited and completed on a monthly basis by our building staff to not only make sure we have good procedure and policy in place, but we're actually following that on a day-to-day basis. There are a number of other things that are in our security plan, but I hope as you can appreciate, some of those are not best to be shared publicly. So I think that's a good overview of what we've publicly been able to share, the work that we've been doing, and the work that continues to be done behind the scenes to make sure our students and staff and visitors are safe. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council or board, if there's any additions you'd like to make.
Mr. Superintendent, just real quick, if council does have questions, we'd like to, we have to introduce ourselves before we speak because the minutes would be a little difficult for whoever's taking them. So again, this was Joe Dimeo, just letting council know we could do that. I do have one question, and I'll do it as I was told to do it. This is Joe Dimeo, have a question for you, Mr. Superintendent.
I wonder who gave you that advice?
I wonder.
Neil's smiling.
Trying to keep the record clean.
You have one off-duty per school during normal business hours? Is that how it's gonna work?
We have a full-time SRO at the high school, a full-time SRO at the middle school, and we have hired security to cover the elementary buildings.
As needed.
As needed. So that is the, the plan, based on the recommendation of the chief. We've determined what that coverage that is needed at the buildings and determined placement accordingly.
It can also be variable. If there's a threat or some other reason to be concerned, we can ramp it up or down. So it's, but there is a minimum.
And this is George Grozen.
Two has advised us not to provide too many details.
And if I could add, the renovations and changes to the secured vestibules that will be happening at all five elementary buildings, plus the preschool, was approved and was reviewed by police chief and by the fire department. They're very much like when this building was built. We had what was called a core meeting once a month. And once a month, it was represented from the fire department, police department, building department, building engineers. So when we had an issue, when we had a problem, we sat in one room, it was 30 of us, and those problems were fixed, they were solved, they were brought up. So there wasn't anything lurking underneath. It was, everything was wide open. So we worked together as a city, as a school district, to put this building up, to do the renovations at the high school. And that's really why we have the building that we have today, is because of that cooperation. But again, those plans for those buildings this summer have been reviewed, have, and will continue to be reviewed by your security forces, the police chief, and by the fire department.
And we appreciate that participation.
Thank you.
Indeed, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
So on the, on the security side, I mean, is, do you guys envision changes? Or are you guys, how are you guys reacting to the world we're in today, right? So, I mean, it's a, we have the police force, and is there anything that's, that's new or challenging on, on the city side? Or, or new initiatives or anything like that that might be, you might wanna share or tell?
If I may, Mr. President, Tom Persiak, our chief, our safety director, our deputy chiefs, are constantly attending additional workshop, additional workshops, additional seminars, being involved at a much higher degree simply because of where we're at. You know, you must understand, we're at 71 and 82. We have the turnpike through our community. We're working hand-in-hand with the Ohio Highway Patrol. So yes, their jobs continue to change. I can assure you, their job is not the same today that it was 30 months ago. So yes, they are constantly, as we are with our dispatch center, as we are with all of our IT, we are constantly upgraded, upgrading to keep up with the current issues of the day.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate that. And anything that comes up that you think we should be aware of, or know about, or react to? And then we do.
Carl, be assured, our chief is in touch with the superintendent on any issue that may arise. And we find him, morning, noon, or night.
I know the...
And I think he can attest to that.
We speak almost daily.
Yes.
Yes. Unfortunately, but fortunately. Okay, I was just wondering if there's anything on the student safety side, on your side, that you wanted to share or talk about? I know we've gotten updates and told not to take, not let walkers out at certain times when we've had problems. We appreciate that, you've worked that hard. Is there any other, anything else you wanna share on safety, Cameron, or?
No, I think that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a plan that's always evolving and, and developing. It's never a finished product. And so the chief and I have, as well as with the board, have our list of priorities, and we're working those priorities, and we're excited about the enhancements we're able to provide in such a short period of time. And we'll kind of, continue to assess and see where we need to improve and grow as our world changes and evolves.
Excellent. So then that would bring us to our next item, the facilities and property. And I know you're interested in some of the things we have in our, we have Albion property and some other things that are sitting idle at this point. And George, if you wanted to take us through the, y'all have this, I said that first.
Yeah.
The board, y'all have your...
With the help of Richard and with Carl, what we established four years ago? Richard, was it three or four? We established a, a facilities development committee. The committee is based on taxpayers who put their money into the school systems. What we wanted was, we wanted a group of individuals who would share ideas, would come up with ideas, that would work through ideas on what exactly we needed to do with our buildings and facilities. What we're gonna do with the properties that we currently own, and we've gone through that. Members like Ken Evans, Brian Jundgerberg, we've got wonderful people that are on this committee that help us, provide us with some guidance, some oversight, some ideas. My biggest...
Joe Mossberger.
Joe Mossberger, absolutely, from Swage Lock.
Yep.
One of the things that I thought was a great idea, and it really came out of Richard and Carl, is the fact that we have this opportunity to have taxpayers provide us with recommendations, ideas, and thoughts, to review those ideas and thoughts prior to an administration. And in the past, we had administration that was here that wasn't anchored in our buildings, wasn't anchored in our community, that were making decisions for our school district, millions of dollars. And now we have some oversight to that. To go through the 30-year plan, Cameron, would you mind going through?
Sure.
The enrollment projections?
So what you have at the top is our historical enrollment through 2015 through the current school year. And so you could see what those were. Obviously, Strongsville Middle School, we had Albion and Center at that time, so we didn't put the data there because they were two separate data points. But as you look at 2018, 19 through 2000, the spring of 2020, 21, the further you go out in enrollment, the further you have placeholders, especially in the elementary level. So right now, for next school year, we have two full-day kindergarten sections and some half-day sections. And they'll be at Kinzner, Maraski, and Whitney. Chapman and Surar will only have a full day and a half-day section. So you see some placeholders there that, that move beyond. So as you'll see in the enrollment, Kinzner, Maraski, Surar pretty much, and Whitney stay consistent. We're seeing the Chapman area, based on where our boundaries are at, the students. We're not seeing new enrollment there. We're not seeing new students there, and that enrollment continues to decline. Basically, because when we closed Zellers and when we closed Drake, we did not redesign the, the boundaries for those other buildings. We just took Drake and said, these students that live in these neighborhoods are gonna go to Maraski, Whitney, or Surar. And when we closed Zellers, we said, these students that live in these areas are gonna go to Chapman, Kinzner, or Maraski. So it's been a long time since the district has realistically looked at all of its boundaries, now that we've gone from eight, if you consider Allen Elementary School years ago. Eight elementary schools down to five. So this gives you kind of enrollment trends through there. The other thing I would say has been something that has been a pleasant surprise is that the middle school enrollment has continued to grow. What we projected is when the middle school first opened, we would get an influx of students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that would come because it's new or because they're transitioning from parochial to public, or private to public. And we expected after that to see just a, a moderate increase in sixth grade. That's when a lot of students will make that decision to come to the middle school or to come to public schools. We've been seeing consistent increases in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for the past two years, and so we're projecting some more of that to come. So as we look at the enrollment, you know, it's leveling off. We've talked about, you know, when I started in the district years ago, we were over 7,200 students in the district. We have roughly 5,400 students in the district right now, simply because our 65 and over population is growing and our school age population is, is shrinking a little bit. But one of the things we've gotta look at as a district, and you see that as August 2021, of possibly looking at redistricting our elementary boundaries. What that means is we'll take a look at the city as a whole and say, what are the boundaries for students to go to Surar Elementary School? And does that still meet our needs moving forward, based on the space constraints we have at all of our buildings? The reason we picked that date is because when you look at the students that were kindergartners when we closed Drake Elementary School, which was our last elementary school to close, they will be sixth graders at that time, and they will not have to go through more than that one school transition. So that's what that data point is based on. So it kinda gives you a brief overview of where our elementary enrollment is, and our middle school and high school. We're pleased with where the levels are. As I said earlier, Chapman's the school where we're gonna have to take a look at in terms of solidifying that enrollment at that elementary school, which really should be in the low to mid-300s.
The second section on this 30-year plan is a quick snapshot of the Ohio's Facilities Construction Commission, 2012, prior to this building being renovated or created, and the high school renovated. Provided us with documentation as they went through each one of our buildings. So key dates is the first top column. You can see that most of our elementary buildings are either 40, 50, or 60 years old. We have, we have created Zellers Elementary Building as our administration facility. The reason why we did that is if we do receive an influx, if we do receive a number of children coming in, we still have a school. Unlike Parma, and I'll use that as the example, they had torn down a number of their buildings. They saw an influx of children coming in, and they had to go to the taxpayers and ask for them to build a building. Whereas we're continuing to have a building. We can always rent space, office space, for administration, but we reserved that building. Second thing is the renovations, pieces and parts that were done to those buildings in times. The square footage of those buildings is number three. And number four, gives you a percentage of what that building needs to be replaced or renovated per the West, the Ohio's Facilities Commission. So you can see that, for, for instance, in the old Zellers Building, that commission states that 75% of that building needs to be either renovated or removed. We are on borrowed time with buildings that are 40, 50 years old. This third phase, or third column, is our district facilities plan, Phase 1. This is stretching from 2015 to 2025. Top column, 2015 to 2020, you can see we'll be doing critical needs as needed in those buildings. You can see the Strongsville Middle School was open in 2016. And then December of 2015, the administrative offices were converted into Zellers Building. And then the high school was open in 2016. What we're hoping to be able to do is replace some of these buildings in the future. One of the things that we'll be doing this summer, and thanks to building department, thank you to Tony and to a few other people in, at the city, Chapman Elementary Building is an all-electric building. And it has two, let's call it heat pumps. Only one heat pump truly works. We were lucky with, by the skin of our teeth, that both systems worked through this winter. I don't think both systems would've worked through next year. A VAV box is a means of controlling temperature as air goes downstream from the main unit into each individual building. The majority of those VAVs do not work in Chapman. This year, with the help of our new facilities...
Operations.
Operations manager, thank you. We are converting that building to gas. So the difference is $130,000 a year in, in utility costs. Will be somewhere around 40 to 50. And the difference between our operations manager being able to work that price, the original estimate that we received was somewhere close to $900,000. We're close to $500,000 now. And the idea of getting that gas line from Drake to that building was all Tony. He's like, are you kidding me? They're gonna want your business. Call them. If you need any help, call us, and we'll, you know, get to them. They're gonna run that line for free, right next to our building. So that was a huge win for us. The fourth column is the district facilities plan, Phase 2. So 20 to 20, 2025 to 2030 is again, still the abatement, construction of buildings that we need to, and what we hope to do is replace some of those buildings. Then you see 2035, 30 to 35, 35 to 40, 40 to 45. We've even gone so far as to do core drillings at Surar behind that building to make sure that a new building can sustain, the foundation can be sustained in the back of that property. So we've already gone through building pads, ideas, thought processes. Our plan is 30 years. As you get past the 20-year mark or 15-year mark, it is a little, let's call it fuzzy. You never know what tomorrow might bring, but at least we have a vision. We can communicate a vision of what the district's gonna need, what we want, what we hope to do in the next 30 years. And this plan, on a yearly basis, will be modified, will be changed, as things change for us as a district itself.
George, sorry, Matt Schoenhut, do you have any ballpark figure of what it would cost for four new elementaries, or no? I know it's still down the road.
Understood. I can tell you that we've asked a few different construction managers, GPD, Hammond, and a few other people. My vision of it, and the facilities, the group's vision of it, is that we would build four new elementary buildings, right?
Three.
Three, sorry, three. And then Maraski, Maraski, the front half would be renovated or replaced. The idea is build three buildings that are exactly the same. Same light bulbs, same HVAC, economies of scale, right? Let's build three, three exact buildings. We can change the front, right? We can change the facade on each one of those buildings. Wouldn't cost us much. But if you have the same buildings, you have the same parts, you have the same wiring, you have the same, same essential plans. Right now, dollars you're probably talking about 14 to 15 million per building. In 25 to 30, 2025 to 2030, it might be somewhere around 17, 18, 19. We don't know. But the idea is one construction plan, one architect, building a plan for the same building, but again, duplicating it in three different locations. And putting a little bit of money into Kinzner, right? We need to do that, and Maraski, and then maybe a little bit in Zellers, because Zellers is sliding a little bit towards the creek. So maybe shore up that just a little bit as well.
Mr. Grozen, thank you. I mean, very thorough that the district has done this. So the 2012 report had five, you know, five of your eight buildings above what you're saying here is the red line that need to be replacement. You're looking at replacement at least seven years from now, potentially. In the interim, I mean, how are these buildings holding up? In the interim, I mean, how are these buildings holding up? And what is the expected cost to keep them functional? And is it realistic that they can survive, obviously given the issues like a Chapman, that they will be fully functional and a safe and habitable environment for the students for at least another seven years?
I can tell you that with our new operations manager, he's doing an amazing job. We're spending close to, and this is bond money that we were able to harvest, save out of this building, provide into the high school, even save through the high school. We'll be doing parking lots and driveways. If you've ever pulled into Kinsner Elementary, there are potholes big enough for my daughter to stand in. And we need some full-depth replacement. We need some just resurfacing. We do have a current dollar figure that we spend on our buildings for capital improvements on a yearly basis. So we will be able to continue to keep these buildings where they need to be for the next seven, eight, nine years, depending on when we can get our money. So we're very confident that we can keep the building safe. The one thing when we did this building, we did the high school, our mantra was warm, dry, safe. Remember that, Jimmy?
Oh, yeah.
Warm, dry, safe. And that was exactly what the kids needed. So we're confident that we can do that for the next seven, eight, nine years.
Is it possible to potentially move up for some of these, start a project sooner than 2025? Do you think that's the earliest you could go to the voters with a bond issue? Or how would you expect the fund?
It'd have to be a bond issue, because those dollars have got to be completely separate. Bond dollars for capital improvement, brick and mortar, levies for dollars and cents for operations. It's just the current vision of the facilities group. We've got some other things that we've got to take care of in the next five, six, seven years. And we feel that when the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission did their report, and I remember I was sitting next to Mr. Kripinski, and I was actually sitting next to Jimmy as well, when we looked at the report, and one of the buildings they said, at Drake, they said that it was 84, 85% gone. It wasn't. You can still use that building. You just have to maintain it and take care of it. I think they go a little bit above and beyond when it comes to their percentages, but I believe that our buildings are going to be warm, dry, safe for our children for the next five, six, seven, eight, 10 years if need be.
When do we think the money from, you know, the little bit of the small 5% rebate from the original bond issue would come in? What year, if?
We are number 300.
George would know.
You know, the rebate from the facilities committee, the 5%, the week.
Our rebate right now is at 7% for the projects that we've done, and it doesn't come back. So we have to, the way it works, our number hasn't been called yet, so we have to fund the project at 100%. And then when our number is called, then that 7% credit that we've got for these projects will be applied to our next project. We're years away. We're probably about seven years away from our number being called.
So my point is that we're trying to maybe sync that up. So as these projects are going, it might be when that rebate comes to fruition and they call our number. You know, we're in a 7% range. When you go to, I made the comment, when you go to some of these sporting events and follow the basketball team or the track team, and you go to Lorraine, or you go to Sheffield, or you go to these different areas, and you see there are these magnificent buildings they built, and you're like, wow, they're doing pretty good. And then you find out that they're at 81% rebate. So their communities are funding 19, 20, 25%, whereas we're funding 100%. And then maybe we're going to get 7% at some unknown date, seven years from now. And so just think about that when you go to some of these. I've actually been at some of the events, and I'll call George, like, what's the rebate number? He'll look it up, like, 81%. I'm like, holy MacGowan, that's just wrong.
Jimmy Carbone, Strongsville City Council. I reported to city council a while ago, there's actually a community that puts to us that is receiving 35%. I mean, and they're an adjoining city. So what that means is we could build almost two buildings for what they're getting or what we, or the residents passed with the bond issue.
And George Grozen, the amazing part about it is some of the things that they're putting into their buildings. We, when we built this building, we watched, there were certain soils inside this where the retaining pond was, and it was labeled hazardous fill. Each ton was $175 per ton to dump. Our owner's agent double-checked every single ton. It wasn't hazardous material. It was normal material. It was $35 per ton. We got that rebate back. We worked hard for every single dollar in this building. That's why we were able to transfer, George, do you remember, $4 million or $5 million from this building to the high school?
It was about three to four.
Say again, George?
It was about three to four million that we were able to reduce this budget and move through the high school and do additional repairs and renovations that weren't in the original plans for the high school. So just more that we're able, more than we're able to put back into the projects.
Gordon, just as a point of clarification, when we say the elementaries are past their life, the OFCC has a repair-replace recommendation. I usually use the analogy of a used car. One person looks at a used car and says, I'm going to put in a new transmission and get another five years out of it. Another person says, for that kind of expense, I'm going to go get a new car. So all our elementaries are safe, they're functional. We could easily choose to extend their life for even longer, but I think we're in a position where the wisest thing for us to do is to plan to replace those elementaries. But they're not, and I don't want it to be the message that there's something conditionally wrong with them. They're fine, they're safe. From an educational standpoint, you do get to a point where a new building is built with the current best practices, the current ideas, and the best way to educate. That doesn't mean that the existing buildings are unsafe, are unhazardous, or what have you. You know, we could choose to extend them another 20 years. Probably would be penny wise, pound foolish, but that was a similar situation that we looked at at the high school, and we looked at the two middle schools. Albion was a much relatively newer building compared to Center, but all things equal, it made more sense to demo them and build a brand-new building and get the effects of a brand-new building as far as upkeep and repair than it did to say, let's renovate. But there were a lot of opposing views at the time that were emotionally attached to those buildings and wanted to remodel and renovate, whether that was the smartest move or not. But now that the new building's here, those opinions are hard to find. But I do want to be clear that you have to understand that, no different than, you know, personal opinion on a house. Some people look at a house and say, it has good bones, I'm going to remodel it, and I'm going to have that old house. Other people are going to say, for that kind of money, I'd rather buy new.
And Albion didn't have good bones. Although it was newer construction, it was cheaper construction, and it was, its bones were toast.
Matt Schoenhut, do you guys, is that bond money, is that fund completely exhausted, or is there still dollars remaining from that?
There's still a few dollars there, and that's what's funding Chapman and the asphalt that we're doing this year.
One complaint I get all the time is the sign to the high school on Lund Road. I know we've been putting a Band-Aid over that for a very long time, trying to make that look good, but it's everybody's first impression pulling into that school, and I hear it more than you would think, honestly, that it's, in the event, I know that's not a critical need, but certainly an aesthetic need.
Looking for donations.
Mr. Naiso.
Yes.
All the signs in the district have been replaced except for Surar. So they've all been with the white background and the green font. They all have solar lights that are put on them, so you could see them at night. We're still waiting on Surars, but, you know, in terms of if there's concerns about the high school sign, it's new, so it's not going to change anytime soon. But they are all new signs, the preschool including. So the signage is there, you could see them at night. It's better than, the elementaries were the kind of brown picket, not very attractive signs. So we've done that. There's just a couple other things that I just wanted to share about the facilities plan, just a high level. We see, the facilities committee sees, in the future of our district, five neighborhood elementary schools. There's been some communication or talk about, are we going to have these massive elementary schools that are just going to go down to, you know, half of the city will go to one? That's not the case. As you could see in the 30-year plan, we see that, you know, each quadrant of the city, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, will each have a middle school. Maraski will be the middle of that kind of elementary school base, but we see that as, you know, five elementary schools is what the district needs moving forward. Now, the space of those elementary schools or the capacity of those elementary schools, if and when new construction is made, may expand a little behind the three, the 350 students that some of the smaller buildings hold, but we still see the value of neighborhood schools, K to five schools in our district moving forward. And so I just want to give that clarification as well.
Kelly Kosick, I have a couple questions. I guess I'll start with, the preschool doesn't have anything written as to any expansion or any plans for it. I know it's a new building, and I actually have two kids, my son went through it, and my other son is there now, and a huge proponent of it. And I know that with the five-star rating, it's gotten a lot of families excited about it. Have you considered expanding that program? Because I know there's not a lot more room in that building.
We have considered it, and next year, we're planning on not adding on to the building, but adding classrooms at another elementary school in the district. So we do have an elementary school that has some available classrooms. So we would be, years and years ago, if you were here, Drake Elementary School was the home to the preschool. It used to be in an elementary building. So the preschool next to the high school will continue to house the majority of our preschool classes, but Chapman Elementary School will be the other school that will house additional classes, which will give that program the ability to grow. Just so, again, a point so everybody's aware, by law, a child identified with a disability at the age of three has a right to services. We provide those services at our preschool, and then there's a ratio of what we call typical peer to student with disabilities. So our enrollment is not something we, as a district, have the ability to say, well, it's 150 and no more after that. It's as many students as need services, three, from three on up to school age, that we provide those services. And as Ms. Kosick has shared, we've seen that number of students that need services grow in recent years, and we will have the space and the room and the support to provide those services.
That's wonderful. And then my follow-up question to ask you about the preschool is, what are the plans for bringing in a full-day kindergarten for the entire district?
So one of the things we have, we have a strategic plan for our district. It's called our Strong Schools 2020 Plan, and as a part of that, we have been working on a study this year to look at two aspects. What's the educational benefit of full-day kindergarten, free full-day kindergarten for all students? So one of the things, there's a lot of research out there in educational literature that talks about the benefits or lack thereof of full-day kindergarten. We've also looked at our internal data points to say, you know, by the time students get to second grade, does it all level out? Or are our full-day kindergarten students still performing ahead of our half-day kindergarten students? The other thing that we've done is we've done a financial survey of surrounding districts to see what tuition is charged or which ones have free. I would say just our preliminary results are of the tuition-based programs. I believe we are the cheapest. If not, George maybe could speak a little more to that, but I believe last time I looked, we were the most cost-effective program. But we will have a record, there's, obviously, it's paid for next year. We've already set that in motion, but we will be discussing that with the board. We'll be sharing our findings, and then make it, the board will have the ability to make a decision moving forward from there, based on whatever recommendation we decide to bring further consideration.
And then Kelly Kosick, just one additional question. The data that you're talking about, is it data specific to Strongsville about whether the kids that are in full day are catching up at second grade, or is it a bigger data pool?
We've looked at the bigger data pool, just in, you know, educational research in general, but we've also looked at Strongsville specific. We've looked at some of the internal assessments that we use and how those level out or don't level out by the time they get to second grade. So it's a combination of both.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can tell you that highly unlikely that we'll go to paid, all-day kindergarten anytime in the future. It's just too expensive, right? So we have limitations on what we can afford to do, and unless something changes, I mean, I don't see how we can do it. I mean, there's things that, there's just some things we could do, and there's some things we want to do, but, you know, we're always balancing that student achievement, and we realize that full-day kindergarten enhances student achievement, but at the same time, we've got the constraint of taxpayer funds, and we have so financial prudence, so it makes it difficult to do that.
Do other districts get more money from the state, so they're able to do it?
Yes, they do.
And this is a state problem.
Yeah. What's our percentages like?
So the way the state funding formula works is you have, it's the basic per pupil is $6,000, and then depending on the student type, additional funds are added, additional per pupil amounts are added to it. And then there's multiplied by what's called a state share index. So right now, our state share index is 9%. So we get 9% of $6,000 per pupil. So that state share index could vary between the...
Single-digit, nine.
Yeah, single-digit nine.
Oh, I heard. Just a clarification for everyone, 9%.
So if we look at the fact of the loss of tuition money that we collect, which, we don't make a profit on that, the tuition money goes to supplant the half of a teacher's salary. If we look at the reduction of the tuition charge plus the additional teachers, it's, the estimate is between, for our district, $800,000 to $1 million of additional expense annually.
And to clarify, that's just the salaries and benefits. That's not the building costs. That's not the space costs. It's not all of those costs, which means...
Purely incremental costs.
Unless the state would mandate it, I don't see us financially being in a position to offer it.
Another unfunded mandate, you mean?
And we don't market up either, so it's not like, okay, we've got these people, we're under the market, so, you know, that number comes out to be, you know, $2,400, and we're like, let's make it 20, and let's get 400 bucks. We don't do that. We charge its cost of the incremental cost is what we do. We divide it by the number, and that's exactly what we pass on.
And Cameron, the number of full-day kindergarten students, it's risen for this coming year, am I correct?
Yeah, we started the first year with full-day kindergarten, we started with five sections. Next year, we'll have eight sections of full-day kindergarten.
Because of the value. I mean, it's, and you're on the right thread. I mean, those children, those five-year-old children, being in a classroom for those many hours, I mean, it's just an opportunity for their minds to open up a little bit more, for them to...
Certified teacher, not daycare, right? They're not colored.
So it's an opportunity for them to see more, to review more, to look at more, and that really truly is what our children need. The unfortunate part is we're getting $1,400 per child, where if you go to other parts or other communities around us, they're getting five, $6,000 per child.
Yes, I absolutely understand, Kelly. Again, I'm raising this issue because I know this is an issue that parents are concerned about.
Oh, yeah.
And I know you guys are stretching your dollars, and you're doing a great job, and I know that the teachers are fantastic. I worry for the kids that don't get the full-day kindergarten, because they're kids that deserve those opportunities too.
I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, it's painful to see that. Some people can afford it, some people can't, and then, you know, you get, you just don't want to be in that spot, but we are, unfortunately.
Duke Evans, I've got two things to say on this. Number one, George kind of glossed over it, but we never had a 30-year plan, so this is a real good improvement from what was going on in the district, kind of hit and miss, and he and the Facilities Development Committee deserve a lot of credit for that. Number two, something that all the council people here are very familiar with, we, like you, get hosed by Columbus, and it never hurts that our taxpayers take the time to write letters to our representatives, Mr. Tom Patton or Mr. Matt Dolan, and ask them for their support and to let them know that we don't appreciate in Strongsville, the hard-working people in Strongsville need to have the same kind of support that other communities do, especially the abutting communities, as Mr. Carbone mentioned. It's just not right. Our folks do right by our kids, we do right by our city, because that's the right thing to do, but Columbus does not do right by us.
Jane Ludwig, school board. I had a question regarding the possibility of us ever selling land again that we didn't need, and how that would fit in with the city's 30-year plan. Is there something that we can coordinate with how that would work from a zoning standpoint, or what you would like to see with any land we may divest ourselves of in 10, 20 years?
Matt Schoenhut, we're working on a lot of that now, maybe not specifically towards your parcels of land, but maybe that can be looked at through our comprehensive plan that we're looking at. I mean, I'm sure we could discuss with the county... I mean, I'm sure we could discuss with the county, looking at that and seeing that if there was some interest in potentially you selling it off, what a use for that may be and appropriate use for that may be. I don't know where, exactly where all of your parcels are. I have a good idea. I think there's a couple of them that a lot of people aren't aware about that are actually school property. But if, if you wish, I would encourage you to come to one of our comprehensive plan meetings as well and maybe discuss with the county a little bit, maybe where some of those are and maybe we can look at that as part of that plan.
Jim Carbone, and I've talked with Joe Mossberger. That's one of the things, he's going to reach out to the county. And so, we have in our master plan, kind of the schools' master plan, just location of possible buildings. I mean, one thing I think we discussed through the Facilities Task Force was, we don't want to just offset land because you can never get it back either. So, we want to be careful of that. But I think in the future, Joe will be contacting the county and, and that information will be parlayed to the county.
And is your master plan also going to incorporate the walkability of our schools? Because so many of our schools do not have sidewalks approaching them in the event we don't have busing or transportation issues.
Glad you brought that up. That was one of the, it's one of the complaints that we get, especially moving into, you know, with more millennials, the walkability, bikability is very important. And actually, Rodwell King, who, from GPD, who was the architect for your schools, really opened up a lot of our eyes back in 2012 when we were going through this process with that, the importance of that moving forward. So, that definitely will be, and look at it, I mean, you know, Kelly and I, our, our sons are in the same class and they'll never have the opportunity to walk or ride a bike because there are no sidewalks. So, now we have to figure all that out so we can give residents an opportunity for that and our kids. So, that will definitely be part of it.
And we have, just to be clear, we have no intention currently or in, in the future unless, to sell any of our properties. So, there's nothing in the works, there's nothing in our 30-year plan, there's nothing LBN, none of the properties that are currently aren't being utilized, Allen, none of those. We have any intention of selling for a while. I mean, I don't, nobody can knows what happens 20, 30 years from now, but as of right now, nobody has any intention.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I don't know if you have data yet or it's still being accumulated, accumulated. What has been the impact of the charter school to your district? Or has there not been numbers yet? And how will that play in the future? Do we know? Because I know they don't just grab from Strongsville, they market the four or five communities that are attached to our city.
Correct. So, the way it works in school funding is it's a deduct to our financial settlement that we get from the state. So, George, I don't know if you have those numbers available or we can get those to the council. So, we, we do see a financial deduct for community schools, charter schools. So, whether it's Albert Einstein, which is here in Strongsville, or what was Ecott, or any of the other private, or I'm sorry, charter schools, we do see a deduct on the funding we receive from the state. So, the impact that Albert Einstein has had on the district has primarily been full day kindergarten. They have marketed and offer a free full day kindergarten option at their school. That's been the predominant students that have gone to Albert Einstein. There's a few brothers and sisters that may be ancillary students here or there that are in the one on up. What we will see in the coming year is whether those students will come back to the district for first grade when it's, you know, just technically tax dollars that are paying for the education or whether they'll stay. So, we don't, won't truly know the financial impact to see, do those 12 to 13 students that are in kindergarten stay to first grade and 12 to 13 more come in the next year? Or do those 12 to 13 kindergartners come back to our district in first grade and then we do not see that deduct? So, it has been, anytime, anytime one student leaves our district and, as George explained, the state share index, the challenging part with the state funding system is if a student that lives in Strongsville leaves our district, even if they go to Albert Einstein, the state share index doesn't apply. So, they take the full state share with them. So, that's why there's a deduction of they're actually taking more than we would get for them. And that's why a handful of years ago, we started our own online academy where we call it the Strongsville Academy, where students could stay in our district. They could do either a hybrid of partially online to completely online and graduate if they stay with us with a Strongsville High School diploma. And on an annual basis, that's saving us close to $200,000 a year because our students are staying with us rather than going for another online option. So, there is a financial impact. We will see, next year will be the test to see whether that grows or not.
Is, is that particular school's goal to go one through eight?
No, they actually have bought another building in Lakewood. So, their goal is to have a west-side kindergarten through high school. So, we will be K to five, the, the building in Strongsville will be K to five. Six to eight will remain at their original location in Westlake and the building they just purchased in Lakewood will be their high school.
So far, what we see is free babysitting, honestly. I mean, it's all-day kindergarten, you can send, it's free to send them there instead of paying for our school. But if you compare the education, if you compare what's going on in that building to what's going on in our building, completely different. So, we, it's hard to tell how many of those kids will stay in that building and how many will come here. Because it's, it's not comparable.
The crazy part about it is that building needed the most work. That building was the roughest. And I haven't seen, and I drive by there frequently, I go right through the parking lot, I'm not going to be shy about it. And I haven't seen any renovation under that building. And it's, and it's an open concept building. Chapman and Drake were open concepts. Back in the seventies, they believed that you could put four classrooms of children without center walls or doors and they would be able to educate themselves or be educated. Chapman, they ended up building walls. If you ever walked through Drake, they put filing cabinets up and everything else to try to divide classrooms, try to keep it quiet. That building is going to need a ma, millions of dollars of work.
Nine million.
Yeah, it was well over nine.
Plus this all.
Yeah.
Then we're going to use the money that we got from the sale of that building for the renovations and security that's going to go into this new, you know, the existing elementary schools we have this summer. So, money good, good use. Still frustrating the way it worked out.
Mr. Neso, Gordon Short, Mr. De Mayo, I'm going to have to excuse myself as with my wife traveling out of town, I have two young children back there that if they're not in bed by a certain time...
She's waving at you.
My wife will not be happy with me. We'll just leave it at that. So, this has been very educational. I would do, I, I will review the five-year forecast. I have questions, I'll reach back out to the board. But I do apologize, but family commitment, leave me no other choice. But thank you for this. I think this is very well put together by the, the school board. Look forward to working with you in the future. You have a daunting task, but no, you're not alone. We're here for one Strongsville, one city, so we're happy to provide you resources and the help that we can. But, and I do want to actually commend your treasurer, George, because on the finance side with the, with the investments in this interest rate environment, to get an extra $100,000 is pretty impressive. So, I want to commend you for that because that's not easy where, where rates are and what you can invest in. I know that from my days at the state treasurer's office. So, you have a, you're in good hands down there with the finances. So, but thank you all and I apologize, but I do have to excuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, we can, I think, unless there's more questions, move on to the finance side? Treasurer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Neso. So, Mr. Neso asked me to give a brief update on our current financial outlook, where we're at and where we're headed. These are a few slides from our five-year forecast. So, what our five-year forecast is, twice a year, we're required by the High Department of Education to file a five-year forecast, present to the community, approved by the board and filed with ODE. They're done in October, then again in May. October usually ties to our budget that we just approved. Our fiscal year is July through June, so we have until September to adopt our annual budget. So, the October five-year forecast ties to the annual budget. Then the spring update, we're closing out the current fiscal year and preparing for the next school year. So, with that, where our money comes from, overall, we, for this year, we receive, we're projected to receive about $74.4 million in revenue, of which our biggest funding source is 70% is the local taxes. But if you group the local taxes, the TIF revenue and the state of Ohio reimbursements, which are home state and rollback payments, it's all a combination of, a component of local tax dollars. So, about 82% of our funding is from, from local resources, from tax dollars. And that's about close to $60 million. Then the next biggest component is our state, is our state foundation of 11.1 million. Normally, on an annual basis, that's about $9 million, but this year they added 1.2 million of hold harmless for the TPP loss, which is going away and on the bottom. We, we used to receive 3.6 million in tangible personal property reimbursement funding. The governor's budget, that's been eliminated and it was phased out. So, starting this year, it was supposed to be completely phased out, but of the 1.2 million dollars that we received this year, 400,000 was really for last year, they didn't pay us until this year. And then through the work of Senator Dolan, we were able to get additional 700,000 this year as a one-time, as a one-time payment. So, losing that 3.6 million annually is, is, is going to project out to take a hit on our annual budget, as you'll see in the next few slides. Then on the next slide, where our money goes, our annual budget for this year is 70.9 million, of which 80% goes to salaries and benefits. We're people business, most of our expenses are related to edu, to education of children and, so it's, it's the people. So, 80% and that's a good, we, we look at that as a benchmark, about 80 to 85% where we want to be. About 10 years ago, it, the school district was in the nineties on this mark and when you're that high, it's hard to do anything else. So, the, the district and the board has done a great job of bringing that down. Then our next biggest component is purchase services and the biggest components of purchase services are, are the utility bills and then out-of-district tuition. So, there is different tuition payments that we have to, to pay different districts for services that come out and it's just deducted out of our state aid from, from our foundation. So, we have to gross up revenues for those amounts and then they get deducted out. Then the remaining items, 3.2% of our budget's materials and supplies and 1% equipment and then 4% other objects. And then the other objects are really county auditor fees and any general fund debt. Our cash balance, cash balances, so as, as you see with the five-year forecast, currently we're in fiscal year 2018. The blue line is our current cash balance and the red line is our cash balance if the TPP was not taken out. If we were still receiving that 3.6 million annually, and as you can see, if we were still receiving that 3.6 million annually, the district would be whole through the life of the five-year forecast. We would be, we would have a positive cash balance through 2020, but because we've lost that 3.6 million annually, it's, it has a compounding effect and we're projecting a deficit of about $8 million in 2022.
And at one point, we refer to it always, we always talk about that we're losing the 3.6 million dollars and sometimes we call it four. But when you go back, they'd already taken a big chunk of it away. So, originally at one point, that TPP was almost $9 million, correct?
Correct.
So, it was originally $9 million and that's all gone away. Then it got cut down to three, got cut down to four and then that went away in phases. So, although we refer to it as 3.6, it's really over the last six years or so, we've lost $9 million of funding through that TPP. And, you know, the state, the governor's office, they say, well, you know, tangible personal property tax went away, right? We don't have that tax anymore in Ohio. Tangible personal property tax used to be the taxing of buildings and inventory for manufacturing companies. And they felt that that was driving manufacturing companies to move across the border, move to another state. So, they went to what they call the cat tax, which is the business activity tax. Essentially, it's a revenue tax, right? So, the TPP money went to the schools and instead of, okay, well, now we're going to call it a cat tax and before we had a, we had this TPP, this went away, well, they didn't give us any of the, the cat tax money. They just said TPP goes away, so your funding has to get on, you've got to adjust for that. Like, well, wait a minute, you're, it's like left, you know, left pocket, right pocket stuff where the money went down and we just didn't get reimbursed for it, it just went away.
And the interesting thing is, George, when was the last time we went to the taxpayers and asked for fresh money?
The last, the last time, and not to skip ahead, but the, the last time...
It's on the slide.
The last time we had new money approved by the taxpayers was in 2007, which was 11 years ago and it was 6.5 mils, which currently generates about $9.2 million. And the, the time before was August 2002, which was 16 years ago and that's our current six mil renewal levy, which generates about $7.9 million. And since that time, we passed the 2007 levy, we had that, we were still receiving that $8.6 million TPP. So, essentially, those two kind of just washed each other out and...
Thank you.
So, the...
Page five.
Yep. So, page five. So, finance, so as Carl, as Mr. Neso mentioned, one of our district goals is financial prudence. And then our financial prudence throughout the year is what the district has done to improve cost, cost efficiencies. Last, last year, we switched our investment strategy where we laddered approach rather than have everything in one, once money market account. We laddered it to long-term, short-term and intermediate funds, which we were able to increase our general fund earnings by $106,000 from last year to, from last year to the year before. Actually, this year, we're projecting to be at $375,000 in interest. So, it has paid off the, the switch that we have made. And then also, in 2014, the district switched to a self-insurance healthcare plan rather than a fully insured plan and cumulatively, we have saved about 4.6 million through last school year. And then also, we increased our financial transparency. We've put together an annual budget document that is transparent for all of our funds. It, it has a lot of, it's full of great detail from summaries to, you can dig down into the funds. Also, for our annual report, we've been recognized for our CAF, for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Associate, Officers Association. And then this past fall in November, Mr. Neso, Mr. Riba and I presented to Moody's to refund $10 million of our $81 million debt issue for this building and the high school, which in doing so, we were able to get our bond rating increase from a AA3 to AA2. And with that savings, or with that upgrade, we were able to get a better interest rate on the refunding, which of that $10 million, we saved about $723,000, which is a direct savings to the taxpayers, meaning less money that we would need to collect to pay off that debt.
We want to try to be as good as you, man. So, we're working.
The problem is, you know, with, with, I looked at the investment strategy, I think people need to know that we're very restricted as to where we can place our investments. We don't have the opportunity to place the investments in the market and, and follow the trends of the market or as I would say, follow the bouncing ball or connect the, the dots where it's, the, the money market funds, if you want to call them, are, are paying such a low rate as no matter what we have. It's an increase. We done the same, we have done the same thing, George. Whatever dollar we can garner, we do. But again, it is so restrictive because we cannot gamble with taxpayers' money.
Right. We're in the same place.
Yep.
Additional cost savings, as we went over in their 30-year plan, since 2010, we've eliminated six buildings and repurposed one building, closed Allen 2010, demolished it in 13, repurposed Ellers in 2016. And then Drake Albion Center and OPS Field and the board office were all, all closed, demolished or sold by 2017. And in doing so, since 2009, we're about 200 less positions compared to the current school year, which is a 22% decline, which is keeping up with our declining enrollment, which is about the same percentage decline since 2009. And then other cost savings, as Mr. Riba mentioned, we, we created an Ohio online program, the Strongsville Academy, which to retain students within our district, they graduate with a Strongsville degree and that saves those $6,000 going to a online charter school, keeps them in the district. So, we're able to utilize that. So, with that, this is what we call waterfall chart. It starts with, with 2015 and it shows all the, all the increasing factors that go into our five-year forecast through 2022. So, if we, if we didn't, if we didn't do any of these cost-saving measures, our annual expenses in... expenses in, in twenty twenty-two would be about eighty-nine point one million dollars. But because of those savings, our twenty twenty-two forecast expenditures are about eighty million dollars, which is nine million dollars left. So how does this all flow through our five-year forecast? These three years here are the, are the historical years. Two thousand and eighteen, the yellow column, is our present school year. And then nineteen is our, um, four years of projected. The current fiscal year, as I mentioned, revenues, we're projecting seventy-four point four million, expenses seventy point nine, with revenues over expenses three point five million, and an unencumbered cash balance of twenty-six point six million. And then as you'll see in the, in the future, our revenues are in a decline. It's a combination of the, the TPP dollars coming out, of being reduced compared to the future years. And then also, our tax collections are, um, collect, collected and levied on a calendar year basis. But we, since our fiscal year overlaps two calendar years, sometimes we're running into a timing issue. So, um, we, we saw an influx of tax collections in this first half of the year, the first half of the calendar year. So it's gonna reduce our tax collections. Come August, for us, it overlaps the fiscal year. So that's kind of where you see that decrease. But with the TPP dollars coming out, as you can see, our revenue is gonna stabilize. And the future outlook is that we're running into a deficit spending problem. So we do have a cash balance to rely on, but it's, it's unsustainable. So what do we do from here? We have, in our twenty twenty plan, we have benchmarks.
Go back to that, just, I mean, one of the, the key things is that the, the line that's in the center of the box. So we worked really, really hard and we put in all the cost-saving measures because we want to make sure that we weren't spending more than we were taking in. And it took a lot. It took eight million dollars with the cuts about four years ago. We made a lot of changes, did a lot of things to get these numbers in balance. And we worked hard to stay there. And, and it, it's only through the TPP and some other cuts that now put us in a position where we're, where, we're in that spot again, where we're actually spending more than we're taking in. Fortunately, I think in two thousand and eleven, we had about a hundred and ninety, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in cash in the bank. We've worked that number up to, you know, it, it's gonna be, it's peak it at a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred, excuse me, twenty-five to thirty million dollars in cash in the bank as we've worked to save up cash. Now, because of these cuts and the cumulative impact of them, that's, we, we're gonna burn through that in the next five years, just because they've cut our funding and we can't, you know, we'd have to go back and do those same things again that we did. And we're, we're doing a lot of them, but there's only, yeah, we have to make a decision on how we want to deal with it.
And then the only thing I want to highlight, and have George highlight, if you take a look at fiscal year twenty nineteen, we dump, we go from seventy-four to sixty-six, and then we go back to sixty-nine in twenty twenty. And that's a timing issue.
Right.
That's not, that's not like there's some big cut and then there's a income coming back in. That's strictly our school fiscal calendar ends on June thirtieth.
Right.
But the way the property tax is collected is in January and July. And so, that little dip, you should average out. Otherwise, I, I really think you look at that number and you're left there scratching your head going, well, you know, fiscal twenty twenty, you get another four million. Why do you keep on harping on losing money? That's an aberration of timing. It really, it's consistent and it continues to drop.
And, and what happened this year and the reason for that is, is with the changes in the federal tax laws, we saw an influx of people paying their tax bill a hundred percent by December thirty-first. So normally, you see fifty-two, forty-eight percent split, fifty-two percent at the beginning of the calendar year, forty-eight percent at the, at the second half of the calendar year. But because everyone, there was an influx of people paying their tax bill at the beginning of the calendar year, for us, it, it overlapped fiscal years. So that August payment, so the January payment was inflated, the August payment's gonna be a little bit deflated. And it just impacted us over the calendar years.
George, for those listening at home, maybe you want to explain what happened with the tax bill that was passed by the US Congress that anything in excess of ten thousand dollars in combined real estate taxes, state taxes, it was being capped at ten thousand. So maybe you want to...
For the deduction.
For the deduction. And that's why people paid.
Yeah.
People wanted to take advantage of...
Yes, they did. And that's fine. I understand that.
It's great for them to do that. And it gives us extra money to invest at a percentage.
I did the same thing.
Right.
I did the same thing. On a go-forward basis, it can be very difficult for most people to itemize their deductions. So maximize it last year. That's what everybody did. Go-forward basis should be used.
And we're on a cash basis, so we had no choice but to book it when it came in.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving forward, how do we evaluate this? In our twenty twenty plan, we have benchmarks for financial prudence. When we look at spending and we have benchmarks, when do we either go for a cost reduction plan or look for ways to bring in additional funds? One of those valuation criteria is we assess true cash days. We always want the district to be around sixty, sixty days or more with true cash. And the reasoning for that is, again, eighty percent of our dollars come from local taxes. And local taxes are collected essentially four times a year, January, February, and again, August and September. So we kind of have to live through that cash flow. So by having, by having sixty days of cash in the bank, we're able to get through those low points where December's really a low point for us in cash. And then historically, when the district was low in cash, about ten years ago, they would actually do what's called a tax anticipation note. You would borrow a short-term note for that January tax to make payroll in December. So we never want to be there again. That's why we want to have that sixty-day benchmark. When we start dipping below that benchmark, this is black line, we're looking at fiscal year twenty twenty, we're getting close. And then fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which is December of twenty twenty and January of twenty twenty-one. So it's, it's coming quick. And then this red line is a zero balance. So the first time we're gonna hit a deficit, although I did say it's gonna be at the end of June twenty twenty, it's really gonna be, or June twenty twenty-two, it's really gonna be December of twenty twenty-one is when we're gonna dip below that. So, wow, we need to be proactive now and starting to, to right, to right this ship right here, is this deficit spending. These are our other benchmarks that you go through, but they all indicate that we need to, we need to move forward with, with the plan. And the biggest thing is...
If you want to look through those, there's, there's other, those are our other benchmarks you can read through.
The, the biggest component is to have fiscal stability two years and beyond. And currently, it's, the deficit spending is not sustainable. So as mentioned earlier, the le, the biggest component that we can look at without making any reductions is obviously a levy that brings in the most dollars. And then as mentioned earlier, the last time the district passed new operating levy was two thousand and seven, eleven years ago. Prior to that, two thousand and two, which was sixteen years ago. And then since, since the two thousand and seven levy, we've lost eight point six million dollars in TPP funds, which kind of netted each other out. And then also, we've made all these different cut, or we've made all these different efficiencies that I spoke to earlier. So the next step that we're looking at is this Thursday, I'm presenting the five-year forecast in more detail to the board and to the, and to the community. And then, at the May seventeenth meeting, Mr. Riba and I will make a recommendation on which way to move forward from there. So that, that concludes my update. If there's any questions?
Briefly, again, Joe D'Amio. So the, 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 the elephant in the room is gonna be, do you have a goal date when you're gonna make a, a decision? Maybe it's the date you just said about the levy. Because as I stated earlier, this council, at least the majority of us understand, and we have two very new council members that are very quick to study, so they already understand this, that the, the new governor, whoever that may be, is gonna be pivotal in what comes into our town. We all know that. Our state reps and Senator and Representative try hard, I'm sure. But we need to work together on the levies in some fashion.
Right.
So, is this something that you're gonna come at a, a date to talk to us about? Or is this something that you're gonna make a decision and then talk to the administration and then come with us, come to us? How, what do you think?
Well, Cameron and his team will make a recommendation to us on the seventeenth, at our second board meeting in May. So, just coming up.
Okay.
Not this, not this Thursday, two weeks from now. It would be the next meeting. They're gonna make their recommendation. And then this board's gonna act swiftly to come to a conclusion on what we're gonna do. But we're, we're, we're in a spot where we can't delay. And we're, we're quite certain that regardless of who the governor is, the funding model's not gonna, is not gonna suddenly start raining money on Strongsville. Hasn't ever, it's not, it just won't. So, you know, we're gonna have to work with that and see who the governor is. Certainly, I would hope that the next governor isn't so anti-public school as the current one, so that, you know, we, we can, you know, do a little better. But I, I don't anticipate there'd be any increase in our funding model. Every two years, they go through and they talk about change of the model. Every year, it comes out and every year, it's worse. The other thing is, we're sitting on what's called the, what is, it's the, the guarantee, right?
Yeah. So there, the state funding model, there's three diff, it's, it's one model, but you can be on the funding model in three different ways. One, you can be on the formula, which, they run the formula and, and the numbers generated on what you should receive. So you could be either on the formula, or you could be capped, meaning the formula says you should get X, but there's restrictions in there that, that say you can only grow by seven percent each year. Or you could be a guaranteed district, meaning that you receive the same level of funding that you received the prior years. We're what's called a guaranteed district. And one of Mr. Casas', Casas' targets was that guarantee. So, it was, it was slightly reduced this year for us. It was reduced by two percent. We received about nine point one million dollars in total by the funding formula. Of that nine point one million dollars, four million of it is essentially guaranteed dollars. So if they were to ever take that completely away, we're at risk for about four million dollars.
Which they threaten every year almost to take that guarantee away. So that's another six million, or four million dollar bomb that's just sitting out there. So, you know, we're always afraid every time it comes out that we're gonna hear more about that, you know, that guarantee going more and more of it going away and our funding going down further. So, the, the best news we could get, or even just news would be to keep that guarantee locked in, would be, would, would make us sleep a lot better to know that that lever wasn't gonna get pulled and fall through that hole.
Okay. So with the mayor's approval, maybe our law director could share with you the process that it needs. You probably all know it. But just for the record, maybe you could share the process of what it takes to be put on, levy put on the ballot, the cost of the city, so on and so forth. Having the mayor's approval of that.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Essentially, you have to get it in by August, beginning of August, ninety days before the election. And if it's a special election, it's, the cost of the city, it's around ninety thousand dollars. But I think if it's on a, a November election, that, that cost goes down. And I don't have those numbers in front of me. But I think you're all aware that you have to get it in by the early August. And that's why I think the May seventeenth presentation for you guys then, do your analysis and go from there.
And then we need to, the board has to vote on it twice to put it in there. So we, we're well, you know, we, we know the, we appreciate that. We, we know the, the process that we have to go through. And, you know, honestly, one of the reasons that we shared with you all of our savings and our current position, we wanted, we wanted you guys prepared that if we come to you and say, you know, we'd really like your support, if that's ultimately the decision we go, we wanted to make sure that you guys were well aware of our financial situation and had any, any and all opportunities to ask as many questions as you, as you do, as you, as you would see fit.
Mr. Nason?
Yes, sir.
I would, you know, I would offer that, you know, the mayor and I have a great working relationship. And anytime we look at, you know, opportunities that we have to go out for new money or a renewal, we sit down and talk and ensure that we're on the same page. With, with the blessing of the board, I would offer myself, if you so choose, at the June fourth council meeting, by the time we have the May seventeenth meeting, if the board is gonna vote on a levy, it would be starting at the June seventh meeting. That would give the board enough time to consider the facts. And even if a decision isn't made, I can share what the recommendation has been officially. So I, I leave that to Mayor Persiak and President D'Amio. But I would be more than happy in the, it's starting in that June meeting, to be at a meeting to kind of share where we're at as a school district.
You're always welcome to come to our meeting.
And as always, my office is open and as we continue to communicate.
Yep. If I, if I can quickly share, you know, Carl and I have been on the board for a while. And to give kudos to George, our finances have never been more accurate than before George was here. You know, if you, if you use the analogy of a train, we've had past treasurers that you didn't know if the train was on the tracks or it was off the tracks, if it was going across, off a cliff. The good news is, is we have a, we know where our train is and we know it's on the tracks. The bad news is, is we know where that, where those tracks are going. And so, it's not, it's not a question of, of if, it's simply a question of when and what's the most prudent decision to make. But the train is, is going in that direction. You see the challenges we face. They're no different than the challenges the city face. I would be interested to know a little bit about the crystal ball of where you see your financial challenges over the next twelve months.
Well, I would be only too happy to share our CAFR with you. It'll be completed here in about another month.
Great.
Anything you want. In the meantime, feel free to come in and see me. I'll share with you whatever information you want. It's, it's an open book. We'll share with you our budget, we'll share with you our forecasts, and we'll share with you the issues that are also facing each and every one of us on the city side. You know, as you are faced with potential cash deficits, and you are faced with either remodeling or updating or, or building new schools, we're, we're faced with continuing issues with our rec center, we're faced with, with city streets, and all the other demands that the public put on, puts on us for infrastructure improvements. So, I mean, we, we share a, a common cause in this respect. We're all trying to meet the demands and the needs of the residents. And every one of those demands equated to dollars.
And just so that we've said it out loud, I think it's, it's beneficial that we have those conversations. The capacity of the taxpayer is limited. And so, for us to, to not make sure we're in conversation with each other is foolish at best.
Correct.
Have you seen reductions in funding from the state?
Two point eight million.
Two point eight million?
Give or take.
Give or take.
Not one of my favorite subjects of discussion.
Oh, not. And just, and how do you, do, we, we encourage our taxpayers and the people who happen to watch our meetings and our parents to write to their, to their legislators to, to see if they can influence it. Do you guys have a, you guys do the same thing? Or do you have a plan? Do you have a form? Do you have a mechanism to protest these cuts?
Well, we use our, if I may, Mr. President, we, we use the mayors and managers of Cuyahoga County, the Northeastern Ohio managers. And we actually lobby in Columbus and we testify before the Ohio House or before the Ohio Senate. We, we have a plethora of, of requests. And we do everything we can to help maintain whatever funding we do get from the state. And that includes the local government fund and the various other funds as, as George alluded to. But at the end of the day, the difference with us is, thank goodness, we have been able to assist and rev up the economic engine here in the city of Strongsville and our business parks, which is our, which is our main revenue source. In our case, our revenue source is city income tax. And eighty-four point five percent of our general fund comes from income tax. So I, I think you're all aware of that, that's for sure. George, I know you are. Cameron, for certain. And we're gonna be tomorrow down at the county again on, on these TIFs. So, that has been our plus. And, and the, and the other plus that we've been able to, to, in order to raise additional dollars, or as I would say, close the gap, is we've been able to attract major corporations, not only from other states, but, but from around the world now. And they're relocating their headquarters, or locating their headquarters here in the city of Strongsville. So, to us, this is what our focus is. And contrary to what you, you know, may, you may hear on the street, you know, there has to be a balance. And not only do we want to attract good, solid, strong corporate businesses, but the corporate businesses will not come here without an equal balance of retail, without an equal balance of infrastructure, without... an equal balance of infrastructure, without-
Good, strong schools.
Yes, good, strong schools, and more important than any of this to them is public safety. So if they would detect for any reason, we were weak on, on our safety forces, or weak on our, uh, weak, uh, with the number of policemen and women we currently have, or if they felt that their employees' safety or, or the safety of their customers was in jeopardy, they would not locate their businesses here. So we do work together. And I, I think it was Jim Carbone that came up to me when you were talking about Cameron and everybody, about the building of the school, that school we're in right now. And yes, this made a significant difference to the real estate values of all of our homeowners here in our community, without a doubt.
Yeah. When Jimmy and I were talking about it.
And again, Councilman D'Amio, just to add on, on to the mayor's, I don't know how, mayor's thoughts. I don't know how many years, you can go back to Walter Ehrnfeldstegs, but, but this mayor says it much clearer. If council doesn't respect each other and get along with the mayor, the mayor, respectfully, then businesses don't want to come here. So now we're opening the chapter of the school board and council and both administrations working together. So the mayor now can go and say, look what else we're doing now. So I think that's a, a huge part of, of my push, of this council's push, uh, to get everybody together. I hope we do this, you know, in the next six or seven months and weather hopefully a little worse than it is today.
Yes.
So-
Can I just interject one other thing? And thi, this is really something we all really need to pay attention to. Uh, we actually help put on seminars for our local Realtors to make them aware of all the amenities in this town. And every Realtor that we have spoken with over, in my case, over the last ten years, the people who are relocating here, the executives, whether they be senior executives, junior executives, they want to know about our schools. And what happens, the Realtor actually drives them by the elementary, middle school or, or high school where their child will attend. And the people see this with their own two eyes. So it is imperative that we continue to do what we're doing because it all folds in together. And so many of the people, when they see where their children are going to be educated and they see all the other amen, the other amenities that are offered to their family in this community, that's why they choose Strongsville.
Yep. And I'm, and, and this is a formal process where we, now we all talk. I mean, Jimmy, Matt and I all came up and won our first elections together. So we knocked on doors together and we've been talking since 2011. So, I mean, we've all been real close and, you know, Joe and I have been talking. We've always talked, but I think it's important that we formalize this approach so that it's, you know, we, we can share this information and it's clear. Because it's difficult with Sunshine laws, we can't do this. We can't sit around more than two of us and, and talk, right?
No, that's not a good idea.
That's not a good idea, right? So, so I think we have to have that stuff.
I, I have one question, if I could. Um, and this goes to the city side of things. For us, property values and the taxes we receive from those property values is a critical component for our everyday dollar. Obviously, Sears has got a little bit of an issue going on right now. And we've got a mall. And we have a mall that is an economic engine for this community. It is. There are going to be some changes to that mall. Have any formalized plans, ideas, thought processes have been put on paper or have we done anything? Because Mr. Damon had invited me to a, a group and we were able to sit down and talk to the, the manager at the mall. Um, most people don't know this, but we've got the number two Dicks sporting goods per square foot in the state. Um, it's a smaller retail location, but they pump out a lot of dollars. We've got a lot of individual stores. We've got a lot of jobs. We've got a lot of income tax coming from that, that facility. What have we done or what has the city contemplated moving forward five years, ten years, fifteen years to help bolster that economic engine? Because yes, it brings a lot of people in during Christmas time. Um, and I know our security forces, it's always an issue having to circle that place. I get it. But it is still an economic engine.
It's three and a half million dollars to the school district in property taxes. Correct, George?
And, and we're in a fight. I mean, don't get me wrong. That mall is in a fight to survive and last, because there's always going to be people my age who don't want to buy a shirt on Amazon. I want to actually go try it on. And I, and my wife makes fun of me every day about that. But have we, have, as the council, has the administration put some formalized ideas together to say, hey, we're going to work with the mall or do this for the mall? Because it's just a giant lot, it's a giant source of revenue for the schools. And so I'm just more curious-
Mr. President, if I may, uh, first of all, I think Matt Schoenhut alluded to the fact of the new comprehensive plan that is being written as we speak. That will be a part of the comprehensive plan.
Wonderful.
So they will have their recommendations. Uh, to this date, I have not seen a draft, but we are anticipating a draft. Secondly, there has been all kinds of thoughts tossed around, uh, by the council as to what might belong there. But the real issue is, is how is retail going to reinvent itself? And as you can see from what Target has done already, they have reinvented theirselves and they have turned the corner as far as where they stand, um, you know, as far as net profit is concerned. Uh, you can see what's happened with Costco. They're still making more money than they ever have. So what is going to happen here is, uh, stores like Macy's, for example, um, I've dealt with them when I was back at the Bank yet, uh, when I worked in Cincinnati. Macy's knows exactly what it's costing them per square foot in each store. Should a line of business within those four walls not produce for them, they will yank that line and replace it with another line. And as Target has reinvented themselves, so will Macy's. Sears is a completely different situation, um, simply because of their corporate structure. So I would not use Sears as a catalyst. Uh, but we continue to stay on top of that. Our Economic Development Director, uh, and I have met with the mall, but the problem there is, you know, we've had three owners already of the mall. Um, and the current owners in today's market, um, they, anything is for sale for the right price. However, finding the capital, the finance that is another story in this environment when there is, uh, so many like kind of buildings available for sale. So it's just not a matter of them saying, well, you know what, we're going to close this place and, and move out. It, it simply isn't going to be that easy. So the market itself is going to dictate and the market itself is going to pretty much be the business plan for all the retailers within that mall or outside that mall. And it's just like so many people have said, bring a Trader Joe's to Strongsville. They are not going to come to Strongsville because their business plan will not allow them to come here. They have two markets in Northeast Ohio and that's all they want. And, and this is what's really going on in the retail field. But at the end of the day, it all equates to dollars. And they're going to find a way to make that dollar. Now, in the meantime, each and every one of those businesses, the major businesses in the mall have lines of credit. They have to demonstrate to their lenders that they can continue those lines of credit. And I'm sure we'll hear something real quick if it, if it doesn't, if that trend should go another way. So be assured, we're on top of it. Uh, we cannot control what private businesses do, but we will do our very best to make certain that we're aware of what's going on. And we're in constant communication with the superintendent and, and with George, your treasurer, as to what's happening there.
Thank you.
And I, and I think when you have your thirty-year plan, you own the buildings. We do not own the mall.
Great.
On the, on the flip side though, every out, um, box store is individually owned, which actually will aid in the redevelopment. Um, the mall scares me. I remember, uh, you know, my parents came from two Italian neighborhoods. We moved out of the neighborhood. Uh, my dad was a Cleveland policeman. They were under a residency. They got rid of the residency in Cleveland back then. And we moved to Parma for a couple of years. And it was four or five years later, my dad said, this mall will ruin the city. And we moved to Strongsville back in seventy-eight. When that mall was passed here, my dad said, this will be the demise of the city. We're not going to let that happen, but we have to be cautious. And redevelopment has to be in the plans. That was a big push for the master plan. The good thing is, our stores are not doing that badly here. So that gives us more time to plan. Gives us more time to push some of these things. I don't think, I think there's, there's two methods when you have regional malls in your city. Number one, if you, if you Google online, which I've done it a lot, if you're not, if, if the owners of these parcels are not committed to hotels, senior living, office space, and townhouses, your other option is letting that sit and decay and the values go down. Then you put in other, you know, what you're, where you're seeing like Amazon. We, you know, it was brought up, well, maybe, maybe Amazon would buy it out. Maybe it'd be a warehouse. At the prices that, or the values that it's still worth, they're not going to put a warehouse in a Sears at that value. They're going to wait for that value to go down. But as that value goes down, the schools in jeopardy of three and a half million dollars. We're in jeopardy of home values. I mean, like the mayor said, I mean, we're bringing in economic, economic development. I mean, that is our, that's our main resource of revenue for our city. If we already, if we're already seeing empty strips in front, across the street from the mall, and then we start seeing a decline at our mall, when we bring people in, big corporate people, industrial, what, what's that going to say? Because I, I'm, perception is reality sometimes and we don't want that to hit. So we're going to be, work very, very, very hard at this and look at this mall and get a good plan. And even when this comprehensive plan is done, it doesn't, it doesn't, didn't start last year and then when the county's done. It has to continue. We have to be on phase two. And, uh, look, the mall concerns me.
Let, let me just say one final thing, because I know where time is running short already. But the mall has demonstrated their good faith time and time again. As you know, the Giant Eagle was empty. And they completely repurposed that store and you can see what has happened there. I believe the, the owners of the mall and all of their investors will demand from them to repurpose the stores that may become vacant, just like the Giant Eagle did. And by and large, we're doing good. However, I can't, I can't predict what the future economy will be. George will tell you. We, we've gone ahead. We've had nine robust years since, since the recession. Um, a lot of the economic geniuses of the world are predicting another recession. I don't know when. Uh, come Thursday morning to our, uh, our Economic Development Breakfast, we're having a, uh, an economist from Key Bank speak. And, uh, we'll listen to what he has to say, but, uh, we really, that rubber band has been stretched significantly. Um, however, the tax cuts that were implemented here in January on, at the corporate level should continue to rev that corporate engine. We're at full employment, so there's a lot of good things that are happening that will continue to repurpose any of these at this time. So that's all I could say.
Yeah. Well, we went to, to the Moody's presentation-
Right.
-presented to get our, and our bond rate was increased, which saved us that seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So a lot of the questions they were interested in was occupancy rates at the malls, occupancy, you know, in the, you know, all around through the city. And, you know, all of it was so favorable that it was a, a huge benefit of how well everything was running, how everything was going to, to that bond rate and increase. But we had to present not only on the schools, finance, but the state of the city as well. And thank you for the help on that presentation, but, um, it was all looking good. But to your point, Jimmy, we got a-
Before we go on too long.
Yes, sir.
I would like to close the council portion of this. Are you folks all set? We good?
Yeah.
I do this so we don't move on forever. So, um, you are in charge. You can go first or we will wait for you.
Hey, we got another topic here. Our meetings go on forever, you know, man.
Let's go, Carl.
No. Does everybody in my set good? Duke? Uh, motion, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Duke. George, take roll.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
I'd like to keep going, but yes.
Okay. And again, for the record, uh, Mr. Short did have to leave, so we won't call him. I need a motion to, uh, conclude council hall. And just for the record, it is eight forty-eight, April thirtieth.
Second.
So motion.
Motion. So, second, uh, Mr. Damon's motion, second by Mr. Carbone. I'll just go right down the, uh, lane here. Mr. Damon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruff?
Yes.
Skosik?
Yes.
Mr. Short is absent. Myself, yes. Mr. Carbone?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenhut?
Yes.
Okay. We are concluded. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.